Okay.
Oh, good. Thank you. I want to talk to you when we're done. Maybe I'll talk to you. Good evening. I call to order the meeting of the mayor and board of trustees of the village of Burr Ridge for August 25, 2025. Chief Loftus, can you lead us in the pledge? Before we have roll call, can I get a motion to allow trustee Matal to attend by phone? Trustee Matal did give the proper notice and timely notice to support this motion.
So moved. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Anita, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis.
Here.
Trustee Skiafa.
Here.
Trustee Pavezza.
Here.
Trustee Snyder.
Here.
Trustee Matal.
Here.
See Smith.
Here.
Mayor Grasso.
Here.
All here.
Thank you. That takes us to item three, presentations in public hearings. Tonight we have a swearing in ceremony. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, tonight I'm glad to introduce you to three officers that are starting with the police department: Alex Perez, Hamza Yakub, and Justin Rialmo. Alex and Hamza will be attending the suburban law enforcement academy starting September 1st, and Justin comes to us with prior experience, so he'll be starting field training immediately after we're done here. He doesn't know that yet. So, Madam Clerk?
Do them separately or?
Do what she does.
Let's do them separately.
Chief, I think we're gonna do them separately.
Let's do them separately.
Separately.
Just so we can.
Take the pictures.
Each of them and get the pictures. Yep.
Do you, Justin Rialmo, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office and police officers according to the best of your ability?
They notice things.
Do you, Alex Perez, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office and police officers according to the best of your ability?
The nice tie that trustee Smith has on.
Listen, I can get you one of these if you like.
Oh, yeah? I'd like one.
Large, XL.
XL.
Next to the ball. Tweedle.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, for your continued support. Their officers, the new officers are well supported by friends and family and the attendants is also their new coworkers. So, in order to clear the room for you, I'd like to invite everybody across the street for some refreshments.
Okay, let's go.
We can't go?
No.
Chief knows how to clear a room.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, too. Only the unimportant people are left, huh? Okay, that takes us to item four, consent agenda. An item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any one trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked with an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes as an omnibus vote. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, opened for public comment, and voted upon during this meeting. Five minutes: A, approval of regular board meeting of August 11, 2025; B, receive and file plan commission meeting of July 21, 2025; and C, receive and file plan commission meeting of August 18, 2025. Six ordinances, approval of an ordinance, approving a special use amendment in accordance with zoning ordinance section 13L8 to amend the Forest Edge subdivision planned unit development ordinance A 8340201 to, one, lower the minimum age, excuse me, minimum average lot size requirements, and two, to amend the lot configuration of Phase Two in the Forest Edge subdivision, Z10, 2025, 9140, Forest Edge Lane Dusa. That was a Dusey. B, approval of an ordinance amending sections six and 14 of the Burr Ridge zoning ordinance to define a community residence and include it as a permanent, as a permitted use in the R3 single-family residence district and a special use in all other residential zoning districts, ZO5, 2025, text amendment, community residences. C, approval of an ordinance amending appendix five of the Burr Ridge zoning ordinance to amend terminology for persons with disabilities, ZO9, 2025, text amendment, accessibility terminology. Seven resolutions, we have none tonight. Eight considerations. C, approval to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, approving, denying, variances for a single-family residence, VO5, 2025, 7703 Hamilton Avenue, Cervantes Sorrells. D, approval to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, approving, denying, text amendments related to architectural entrance structures, Z12, 2025, Padilla. E, approval of fleet lease agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc. And F, approval of vendor list dated August 25, 2025 for the fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $744,321.13 for all funds, plus $249,761.98 for payroll period ending August 2, 2025, for a grand total of $994,083.11. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda? Five, A, B, and C. Six, A, B, and C. Eight, C, D, E, and F.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Snyder.
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza. Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Francis.
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa.
Yes.
Trustee Matal.
Yes.
Six, zero.
Six, zero, the motion passes. Thank you. That, as I said, there's, there are no resolutions tonight. That takes us to eight considerations. A, consideration of village hall development. Evan?
Mayor, this is one you asked to put on the agenda regarding just the overall status of the village hall development.
Right. So, any further discussion yet tonight? Any discussion from the public? Since the last meeting, I have not received an email or a phone call on this subject. Does it continue to be on the website for discussion?
Yep.
Okay. So, anybody else have anything they want to discuss tonight about the village hall before? We have an item in closed session, but this is, this is the public part of the meeting. It will remain on the agenda for the next meetings so that if anybody does want to discuss what's happening. And just to recap for the public, the board has voted to inquire about the sale of the village hall and see what kind of bids we can get. We have an appraisal of 1.8 million. We have a suggestion from the mayor that we, we should be looking for something in the area of two and a quarter million, and we will begin to discuss whether or not the board. the board is in favor of selling the village hall and funding it, a new village hall on the campus at the police building. And so, if anybody from the public is unaware of this, they should not be, and if anybody wants to comment on it, please let us know either by emails or calls or show up at a meeting. Okay.
Sorry.
Yes.
Last minute thought. So, we're gonna have a button we can click on at the website for continuing information on this.
We're in process of creating that, yep.
Process of creating it. Excellent. And can we also add that cost information that I requested previously?
The one from today?
Yes. The cost information on, on the renovations required for the village, existing village hall. We could add that information as well.
We're gonna put everything that the board has seen from three years ago to tonight and forthcoming.
Perfect.
Much like the CNH page and the like.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And it probably, hold on, Russ will be right with you. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to also give them a link to the space deed study that was done in '06, '07. Okay?
We can do that?
Yes, Russ.
Thanks, mayor. With the Bridge Industrial withdrawing their petition, does that create or provide something for us to look and double-check our numbers? You know, that was gonna get paid for, now it's not. So, is that something that we have to revisit and potentially plan for either future renovation or expansion with Public Works?
Want me to take that?
Yeah, sure.
So, a good question. I would say no, though. We don't have any structural issues that are currently present at Public Works, at least not to the extent that it's presently a village hall. We have enough space to occupy Public Works for the long-term foreseeable future. Again, I don't see the village growing rapidly like other towns may in both population and size. We also have a second site, which is Rustic Acres, which we can use if we need to. That's been there for at least 50 years and is kind of a near and dear thing to our heart. The Bridge Industrial Development, where they were proposing to build a new Public Works facility, was more related to the fact that they needed access through our facility than the, than it was a comment on the facility itself. International Boulevard, if you look at the map, dead ends into Commonwealth and what is effectively 451 Commerce Street, which we own. That gave us a lot of leverage, and so the suggestion was if you need to move us, you need to not only move us, you need to give us more land and a new building. And so, the new building was not necessarily reflective of the current building's condition. It was more a case that they were forced to move us as a result of their request to have the, the traffic flow go through there. So, we've had an architect look through that as a result of that. We had Trivia, who works in town here, they did an examination of our building. Again, they feel like we have enough space. The building does not have any significant capital needs that are to be addressed at this point. Certainly, as all buildings do, we might need to talk about that well down the line, five, 10 years in the future, but I have no knowledge of any immediate wholesale need to rebuild, renovate, et cetera, that property at this time.
Plus, any, I mean, presumably additional proposals on that site. The same geography and ingress and egress exists, and we may end up getting a new one, depending on what the new... But it's a good question, so, but I guess the answer is no. We don't have to look at that now.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss right now about the potential of a new village hall and the sale of this one? Okay. To be continued. As I said, this will be a continuing item until the board makes a decision. Eight, B, consideration of award of contract for architectural design services with legal architects of Oak Brook, Illinois in not to exceed amount of $250,000. Evan?
Thank you, mayor. So, this is step one of several which could be taken by the board to actually design and ultimately build a new village hall across the street. This is a phase that all properties like this go through and all developments go through. There's an architectural design phase. Staff has divided this phase up into two phases, actually, design and construction. We're talking about the design phase tonight. The design phase is scheduled to last about 15 weeks and lasts through December. Design is where architect of record would meet with staff. If the board directs to have other people involved in that meeting, we'll welcome it, but work with staff to really design the guts of the building, how it will fit together. Right now, we've only seen a, a site plan, a very basic plan, but we'll need to talk about how beams fit together and how offices actually lay out, do light switches go there or there? And at the conclusion, this will have the second phase, which is the construction phase, and that's where all the design decisions get put into a permit document. The permit document is then sent out for bid, and then bids are ultimately considered, approved, et cetera, as we're, I think we're all aware. We've done this for two reasons. The first is to give the board just more time to consider potential sales of village hall. As we talked about at the last meeting, it's been up for sale for just two weeks. That gives us time to consider that option as we move forward. It also is there to make sure that we're only spending what we have to spend going forward, to make sure we keep the project moving, but we're not fully committed to the entire step at this point. The current agreement for you tonight is a $250,000 not-to-exceed budget. The phases are priced exactly the same, 250 and 250. The board was provided a budget at the July 11th board meeting. The budget for architectural design and the like for both was $500,000. We had known that again ahead of time because we've been working with our architect to establish that value, but we're right where we want to be. Ultimately, we'll be bringing back, if we get through both phases, we'll talk about, about a March 2026 bid timetable, which would be then theoretically approved in April of '26. So, that's our basic timeline. Our architect is here tonight. If you'd like to answer, ask any questions of, actually, another Evan, Evan Mink. So, if you have any questions for the architect, he's available tonight. But really, what would happen tonight is you'd be approving staff to enter into a contract with Legat, and at that point, we begin to physically, functionally, design the addition at police station that we've talked about for several months now.
Any questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to award the contract for architectural design services to Legat, architects of Oak Brook, Illinois, in amount not to exceed $250,000?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Any discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Or, trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero, the motion passes. All right. That takes us to public comments. Is there any public comment on any subject? Doesn't have to be on the agenda. Okay. The record show, no public comment tonight. We'll do reports and communications, then we'll move to go into executive session. Okay? And Anita, you are here, so would you like to start, please?
Sure. I just want to let everyone know that we have the MECA moves, which is a 5K run on September 20th. It starts at 8:00 and will end at 10:00 a.m. I encourage everyone to participate. It should be a good time, so hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Just, just a couple of quick ones from me. The U.S. Navy band, I was there. Nice little turnout. They were good. They played for an hour. They, most patriotic thing that they played was their own Navy, what would that be? The service anthem?
Anthem.
The anthem? Isn't it anthem? So, the Navy anthem, which they kind of jazzed up and kind of made a nice, they played a medley of Led Zeppelin songs. This is a brass quintet, by the way. I thought it was pretty well done, and they were entertaining, and I hope we get a chance to get them back. So, yes, Al?
I was interested in reading the Sunday real estate section of the Tribune. There was a house in Burr Ridge that's going on sale for $10 million, and it'll be the largest price, even, even more than the Hinsdale house.
If it sells at that price.
If it sells at that, right.
Yeah, they did.
Al, are you selling your house?
Yeah. It's not Al's house. Yeah, that's right. It was a big front, well, front page of the real estate section. Yep. Yep. Good publicity for the village. Anybody else have anything? Okay. With that, I need the stuff to read. I didn't bring the formal notice. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn into executive session?
Right. Motion to, can I get a motion to adjourn and go into executive session? The purpose of the executive session is the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body under five ILCS 120, 2C6.
So moved. Second.
We have a move-in. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero, the motion passes. We are going into closed session.